Good evening, I'd like to call to order Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 Tuesday, January 8th, school board meeting. If you would all rise so we could say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. I'll entertain a motion on the floor for entertain-
I'll move that forward.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Ted, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion has carried. Next, we are having a wonderful night tonight because we are swearing in our newly-elected board members. So if I could have the board, two new board members, meet me in the front of the tables, please.
You need to come too.
Do you need a mic or anything?
I might be a mic.
Do you need to hold the mic?
Good evening and congratulations. School Board Member oath of office. It is an honor that you are elected, appointed to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of the school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of your school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement, and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment for the oath of office. So if you repeat this, they're supposed to repeat that, right? Okay. Repeat after me. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office-
I hereby publicly affirm-
Office. Office. I hereby publicly affirm-
I hereby publicly affirm-
My commitment to the oath of office.
My commitment to the oath of office.
I swear and affirm-
I swear and affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully-
That I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District 13. Will discharge faithfully the duties-
The duties.
Of the Office of School Board Member-
Of the Office of School Board Member.
Of Independent School District 13.
Of Independent School District 13.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations and welcome to the School Board of District 13.
(applause)
I'd just like a point of personal privilege before we get into the organization of the board. I want to welcome all of you again to Columbia Heights School Board. It's always nice, a new group, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Also tonight with us, I'd like to introduce Mr. Josh Martin, who is Vice President of the Minnesota Parliamentarians Association, who will be here for technical support if we have any additional questions. So could we just please welcome Josh as well?
Next on the agenda is the organization of the board. The school board will nominate for our board offices, and any member can be nominated for these offices. A nomination does not require a second. Each office is voted on separately. First is the election of the School Board Chair. I will right now open up nominations for Chair. Is there anyone here that would like to nominate someone for Chair?
I nominate Ms. Lee.
All right. Any other nominations for School Board Chair?
I have a point of information. 2013 is an important year for Member Bardell. I understand his daughter is graduating this year, and you know, I've been through that 2011, my oldest daughter graduated, and it's quite an honor to, and you know that, Member Lee, about being able to sign diplomas of your daughter, their classmates, having that honor that goes on. I mean, it's a once-in-a-lifetime experience. And I'm wondering, you know, in lieu of that, in light of that situation, if Member Bardell would be interested in serving as Chair and having that honor this year?
Actually, I appreciate the feeling, Member Landwear. Actually, I would not, in fact, my daughter forbids me to sign her diploma.
You want to call us family problems? All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any further nominations for School Board Chair?
I would like to nominate Ted Landwear.
Any further nominations for School Board Chair? Seeing none. We have two nominations for Chair. I think this is where we would end up needing to take a vote, and it would be roll call vote. Go ahead, Ted.
I'd like to move that we close nominations.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You're right. There's a motion to close nominations? I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Laura seconded that, and all, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion is carried. All right. So now we would, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd love to, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
I appreciate the nomination, and you know, for the new board members, I want to just give some background. I've given background, I gave background last year on, you know, I've been on the board now, this is my 10th year, and it's hard to believe, but it's been a privilege every single year. And in all those 10 years I've run for board, I believe, seven times, and I have never had the opportunity to be a Chair. I've been a Treasurer of the board, a Clerk, Vice Chair, but never Chair. And I would like the opportunity to do that. You know, this district is all about opportunity, what's in our mission, you know, providing opportunities, and you know, Chair Lee has done a great job. She's been on the Chair for, what, since 2007, I believe?
I don't remember. Five years.
Yeah, so it's been five years, and then Member Bardell was Chair for a year, and, well, in effect.
Acting Chair.
Right. And so we, you know, I've had a lot of nominations, but never the opportunity to be elected. You know, and I think Member Lee was Chair when, in her fifth year of serving on the board, that's when she first started being Chair. This is my 10th year, and so I'm long overdue, and if you could just put yourself in my position, it's, it hasn't been, it's been a long time. And so I would appreciate you keeping that in mind when you vote. I know there's been, you know, I've heard a lot of people in the community as a campaign, they'd like to see a new Chair, and you know, they like to see change, and sometimes change is good, and it gives the impression that, you know, we aren't stuck, and that there is, that there isn't anybody controlling, that we're all independent. And so I think that's a great message to send to the public, and I believe in, you know, being transparent and open, that's why I'm giving you this background. It's not easy to admit it's been 10 years of not having, being able to be a Chair. And I went for a whole year not, you know, having votes every meeting and not getting elected, so it's been tough, and it's been tough. I've been to board officer training, so I have the experience there, I have the knowledge to step right into the role of Chair. I'm sure I'll make mistakes, I know I will, but I will do my best to learn and to do the best job possible. This community deserves the best board that we can give it, so I will always keep that in mind and build teamwork. They will, every board member will have opportunity to share their opinions, and as we work together, we're stronger. That's my attitude, and I would certainly be a Chair that fosters that. I've only missed one meeting in four years. My attendance has been, and that was on vacation, so I think I would continue that, and the Chair has to be there regularly if possible, so please keep that in mind. I will do my best to continue that, that good record, and you know, if there's any reasons why I shouldn't be Chair, I'd like to hear that. I haven't heard any reasons, and all eight years, or seven years that I've had been nominated, nobody's really given reasons why I shouldn't be, so hopefully this year, there won't be any either, so, thank you.
All right. You want to call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Palmer.
Ted.
Mr. Larkin.
Ms. Lee.
Ms. Lee.
Ms. Meyer.
Ted.
Mr. Landwear.
Ted.
Mr. Bardell is Lee.
We have a 3-3 tie, and we will call the vote again. Could you please call, roll call again?
Certainly. Mr. Larkin.
Wait, let me, before you do that.
Sure.
Would you like to say anything more before we call a roll call again? I don't want to close it out before you had an opportunity.
Yeah, I just want to say, I hope we don't, I don't want to go through a long, protracted election like happened in 2011 for Chair, so that's the way I feel, I hope we can not do that.
If anyone else has further discussion? Further discussion, okay. Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Larkin.
Ms. Lee.
Ms. Palmer.
Landwear.
Ms. Lee.
Lee.
Mr. Landwear.
Landwear.
Bardell.
Ms. Lee.
Ms. Meyer.
Landwear.
We are at a 3-3 tie. So according to the rules, we can continue, or we can ship this, I think we ship this down to the end of the agenda and do another vote at the end of the rest of the work that we have to get done tonight. So with that, we will, and that's what we needed to do, right? Next, we're going to move to the election of the Vice Chair, and I will open up nominations for Vice Chair, and I will start it off. I would like to nominate Scott Bardell. Further nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Laura Palmer.
Further nominations for Vice Chair. Further nominations for Vice Chair. Okay, seeing none, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Larkin.
Do we need to close that one too?
Oh, yes, we do. I'd like to make a motion to close the nomination, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
All right. I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion from John, seconded by Scott, discussion on closing? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
You don't want to close the nomination?
No.
Okay. Never mind, it doesn't matter, it's already passed, so. Did I miss something?
No, no. I didn't expect to be nominated, so I got a decision to make.
All right. All right, seeing, we're going to move forward on the vote, would you call a roll?
Mr. Larkin.
Bardell.
Ms. Palmer.
Palmer.
Ms. Lee.
Bardell.
Mr. Landwear.
Palmer.
Bardell.
Bardell.
Ms. Meyer.
Palmer.
Got a 3-3 tie.
Okay.
And I will-
I move we move on.
That we move on, I would second that. Discussion.
I think we should have another vote.
Okay.
Okay. Ready?
You ready?
Mr. Larkin.
Doing that right?
If there is disagreement on whether to move on, the board can take a vote on that.
Do we have, I don't have a problem moving. And I seconded it.
We did.
Discussion on it. Discussion on it.
What are we discussing on the moving on part?
Yeah.
Can we have another vote? I'd like to have another vote.
What we need to do as far as our voting to make sure that she gets her vote, when we go to vote on this?
So he made the motion, I made the second.
We'd have to, if we're in favor to move on, we'd say aye, and if not, we'd all say no.
We'd all just vote on it?
Correct.
And then we all say no, and then Laura gets her chance to get the vote.
There's no discussion on it, so.
No discussion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right. Discussion. So we move on? That's what we're doing?
We're taking another vote.
Another vote? Okay. Mr. Larkin.
Bardell.
Ms. Palmer.
Bardell.
Ms. Lee.
Bardell.
Mr. Landwear.
Bardell.
Bardell. Ms. Meyer.
Bardell.
All right, we have a Vice Chair, which is Scott Bardell. All right, we've got the, we're opening nominations for the election of Clerk. Do we hear any nominations for Clerk? Anybody want to be Clerk?
Palmer.
Okay.
Sure. I'll second that.
All right. Discussion. Any other nominations for Clerk? I'm not running this quick. Any other nominations for Clerk? I'll take a motion to close nominations.
I'll move. Second.
Got a motion from Ted, seconded by Scott. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. So we've got-
Congratulations.
Election of the Treasurer, so I'm going to be opening nominations for the election of Treasurer. Do I hear any nominations?
Can I nominate Lori Meyer?
And a nomination for Lori Meyer? Any other further nominations? Any other further nominations? I need a motion to close nominations.
I'll move. Second.
And a motion from Ted, seconded by Scott. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And we have a Treasurer.
Congratulations.
This is an appointment of parliamentarian adoption of Robert's Rules. In the past, Lori, Laura Palmer, it's going to be really difficult, Lori and Laura. Laura has done it, I don't know if she would like to continue, or if there was someone else that would like to be parliamentarian, we can have a discussion regarding that.
I studied Robert's Rules pretty much, so I'm happy to do it.
Okay? You okay with it?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So we're going to go with, we don't have to, that's an appointment.
It's an appointment.
All right. Next on the agenda is meeting dates and times. The regular meetings of the Board of Education have been held on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:00. It is recommended that the board set a meeting date and the time that is convenient for the board members. So on the-
Madam Chair, you missed the motion on the-
On the what?
It's an appointment.
It's an appointment.
But there's action. About the Robert's Rules.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
We're adopting.
On page 7.
Oh, we need to, yeah.
Thank you.
Page 7.
Okay, so we need, so we're going to be adopting Robert's Rules of Order?
Well, we have to vote on it.
I'll move the motion forward.
I'll second that.
Do we not need to adopt the Robert's Rule, Robert's Rules? I mean, I mean, we have to do state statute, school board policy, and Robert's Rules.
Under page 7, there's a motion.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
This is the motion to adopt-
Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised as the Rules of Order for the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, IDS 13, except or modified by board policy.
Okay, I've got a motion from Ted and seconded by Scott. Ready?
Actually, no. Discussion?
Yeah, that's right, we're discussing.
Actually, I think Member Palmer raises a good point. If state statute supersedes Robert's Rules, we should have that in the policy that state statute controls. I don't see that, I'm sorry, in the motion.
Well, it does by operation of law.
We're turning to you.
So.
Hear the question?
Yeah, yeah. So it's already provided in both the board's existing policies and already, and also in Robert's Rules itself, does state that applicable state statutes take precedence over Robert's Rules. So it's not necessarily necessary to have it in the motion. It's still clear that your intent is to follow state law, nothing in this motion would suggest otherwise. If you want to clarify the motion, there's no harm in doing that, but I also don't see any harm in the motion as written.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think to be abundantly clear, I would like to amend the motion to say, except were superseded by state statute. So it's a, at the end, it's be except were modified by board policy and superseded by state statute.
Yep, that would be in order.
That way we would have everything consistent between the motion and the policy.
So we're changing-
So do we have to vote?
We've amended the motion. I just have a point of personal privilege, is that, do you want that to be and or or?
Um.
I'll be and.
Or.
Or.
Yes, I think or is appropriate.
Yes, I, okay, that would be or then.
Do you agree?
Mm-hmm.
Is this an open point for discussion, or I guess, I don't know where we're at. I just don't understand what we're clarifying, if it's already in the policies and if it's already in Robert's Rules. So we're going to clarify it a third time, is that what you're driving at?
Yeah, because it's absent, even though we don't need to say it, it's absent in the motion, and I think to be, there is no harm in making it absolutely clear.
Correct, and there's no harm in not having it either, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So I would move the motion as amended.
I've got a motion on the floor to move the amendment of the motion by Ted. I need a second.
Second.
Got a second by Laura. Discussion. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And that motion has been carried, so now, now we vote on the motion. So all those in favor of the motion for Robert's Rules of Order?
As amended.
As amended, thank you. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
And the motion has carried. All right, so now we'll move on to the meeting dates, the regular meetings of the school board. On the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, 7:00 PM, it is recommended that board set a meeting date and time that is convenient for board members. Going to entertain a motion on the floor to accept the meeting dates as they are.
So moved.
Motion from Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ted, discussion.
Madam Chair, point of order, do we need to mention the, these are for the regular meetings versus the-
The work sessions, yeah. If we, if you look at the suggested motion, it limits, it does address the adding of additional work sessions on the third Tuesday of the month, so I'm assuming that in doing this, you are looking at the motions in the packet, and that's included in the motion.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Further discussion.
So just so I'm clear, so the motion we're passing does provide for adding, for the work sessions.
Yes, it does.
Is it convenient for people to meet on Tuesdays? I guess that's-
I think it is, and I think it works with the schedule on the school too. I think they've worked that calendar around that.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely the best day for me is.
Okay.
And it works well with city.
Yeah, because they are Monday, we're Tuesday.
And most of the school activities are Thursdays and-
Right.
Yeah.
All right. All right, any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, we're moving to the appointment of board representatives. Where is that? I usually like to write it down. Is it there?
I should.
It is on your attachments. It may not be in, that may not be in, just put this, this one. No, it's on your screen. Okay. All right, now comes the appointment of board representatives first. I'm going to read them through. We have got numerous appointments. It's MSBA Legislative Liaison, EXU, Minnesota State High School League, TIES, West Metro Education Program, Northeast Metro Intermediate District 916, Liaison to the School of Columbia Heights, or the City of Columbia Heights, sorry, Liaison to the City of Fredley, Liaison to the City of Hilltop, School Board Policy Subcommittee, Association of Metropolitan School Districts, Columbia Heights Business Council, Additional Honorary and Provided with WMAP. It talks about the funding then from the different ones. So let's start with MSBA Legislative Liaison. I don't have the list of everyone. Can I have that from you, please, or share it?
Yes.
Okay. So last, MSBA Legislative Liaison, last time was Ted Landwear with the alternate being myself. Is there anyone that would be interested in that position, MSBA Legislative Liaison? Anyone? I mean, I'll do it. I mean, I don't have a problem, we'd need an alternate though.
What is the commitments for that?
No, I don't have, we don't have, do we have any of the commitment dates on any of this stuff?
Exact date?
You were that two years ago, remember? Weren't you?
I did MSB.
Yeah.
MSB, you did MSB.
I did MSB.
I thought you did MSBA too.
No.
I believe there was just a couple meetings a year, and I don't-
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not a lot, I know that.
Okay.
I can do it, but if you want to alternate it, we could, you know-
We could do that.
We could do it together.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
All right. So myself, and alternate, it would be Laura. So next, we're going to go to EXU, that was Keith Roberts', and I know there's like maybe a meeting a year, so anyone interested in taking EXU? That's-
What is EXU?
Briefly, it's the Educational Cooperative Service Unit, and it deals with staff development and training, and it runs a principals academy.
We do some of our gifted and talented services through there. And sometimes, but not, I don't necessarily know if it'd be this year, we've run some of our adequate yearly progress meetings, processes through there as well. I'm not sure how often the board meets, however, but that's what the service unit does.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That only does not have regular scheduled meetings.
EXU does not?
No.
You get a lot of inform, you get information.
You get information, ma'am.
Is anyone interested in just?
I am.
Everybody okay with that, Laura?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Minnesota State High School League was Keith Roberts'. Anyone interested in doing that?
What's involved?
It's, there's meetings here and there, it's not, there's not a lot of them, and you'll get more information and.
And you, there's a meeting in the spring, and you'll get a magazine from the high school league once a month. Would you be interested in that, John?
I, sure.
It's a meeting with all the athletic directors around the state, so.
TIES, last time it was Ted Landweir. Is there anyone that would be interested in TIES?
Probably be good to have somebody new, I've been on it a couple years, so.
You wanna talk about what it's like?
Yeah, it's, uh, TIES is the, the technology cooperative that we belong to with other districts that allows us to leverage every, you know, the power of all multiple districts. And so, there's a, there's a regular meeting each year where we get a briefing from the executive director and the staff, and then there's also a TIES conference every year down at the, downtown at Marriott, I believe. At, where, there's lots and lots of presentations on technology and the status of educational technology in, in the state. So that's fascinating as well, and you can come back with a lot of, a lot of information, which I plan on bringing back in the next update, so. So if you like technology, it's a great appointment.
I, I wouldn't mind doing it, but I would have to have a, an alternate. I mean, that's the only way I would be able to do anything like that.
I, I would, I would love to do it.
You wanna do it?
Yeah, I would love to do it.
Okay. Laura Palmer. Everybody's okay with that? Uh, West Metro Education Program, that was me, and that's where, that's the, the Fair Schools downtown, and I've been on this a long time, and actually had really, was thinking about not being on it, but I was. Yeah, okay, and I would, I just wanna clarify that the reason that I would ask is that West Metro right now is in a lot of flux, and there's a lot of things going on, and have, they have personally asked me, I sit on the executive committee right now, and they've asked me to come back. So, it, it's not something that's easily jumped into, especially right now, with the numerous things, not that, I'm not saying you couldn't, but please understand that it's not a personal thing for me, but there is a lot of things that, whether it be litigation or with the Minneapolis proposals and stuff, that goes back in huge history. And there's an executive committee that I'm sitting on, that we are in the middle of some pretty big, big things in this, in, with those schools. So I am, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to stay on that particular board for a little while longer until some of this stuff gets ironed out, and, because I've had a pretty big voice in some of the things that are going on in there, so.
I started on the board when WMAP was first formed, so I have a lot of background with WMAP as well. I have no qualms about stepping right in, and I'm sure I would, I would do just fine. I have a lot of knowledge about WMAP.
WMAP has changed so much that it's hard even as I've sat there for years, Ted. I mean, I don't really have an issue with it, but I would have to at least continue for the next few months because it is, that, you would not be put on the executive committee, so you would not have a voice on that. And the, the, the whole entire district, eleven districts, have asked that the, the committee stay the way it is because of the things that are happening to those schools right now.
Well, I'm fine if you wanna stay on for the next few months, but I would love to pick it up then.
Yeah, we could pick it up later at the end, and I can.
Terminal what the months are?
It's hard to say with everything that's going on. I mean, it could be six months. I mean, I, I guess my, my only thing is I could keep you updated on everything, and then we could, I, I just don't know how long this could go on. Truly is not something that was in my plans until they came to me and asked me, and so, for the sake of the schools, I'm, I'm asking you to be understanding about that.
Well, when you feel like you can step down, I, I can step in.
Oh, that would be awesome, that'd be awesome. Would you be the alternate?
Um, I don't know if we wanna say alternate, but.
Well, the person that.
When you're ready to quit, I'll, I'll fill it.
Okay. Would you like to be the alternate until that point? So that you can catch up? Yeah. Bill and I go, too, sometimes, just to listen to them, it's fascinating. Yeah, well.
Right, Bill?
Fascinating.
How could I miss that?
You can sit in the back with us. So then, it'll, I'll continue until I feel like I can move on, and then Ted can take over. And that was kind of what I was hoping for, so thank you.
Hopefully sooner than later.
Yeah. Thank you very much, yes.
I can tell you're.
Uh, yeah.
You're ready to go.
Mm-hmm, I am. Northeast Metro Intermediate 916, that was Keith Roberts from January to June, and then Joe Sturdivant from July to December. Is there anyone that would be interested in this?
I would really like to do 916.
Anyone else?
I would.
Guess I'd kinda like to do it, but I'm flexible.
Can't they split it?
It's not really.
It's one of those same.
It's one of those things like WMAP, you know, if you're on, you should be on, and they like continuity of, of members, so.
But isn't it from January to June and July?
No, that was because.
Did you guys decide to do that?
Joe, Joe wanted it last year, and they came to the agreement, just like Ted and I have, that. Otherwise, 916 in actuality asks the same thing as WMAP does, is that it's consistent, pretty consistent with the same person for at least a full year to two years. They do have people moving in and out, but, you know, I know that Scott had expressed an interest to me earlier that, that he would be interested in that, 'cause, you know, with background and stuff, too.
If you really.
I would, I would really, really like to, to understand more about the special education aspect, especially because it's such a huge, um, huge part of what we do now. And so I'd be interested, but I really, I really don't think it would necessarily be a bad idea if more than one person attended. You know, it's, it's really good information, I think, to bring back to the board.
I have a point of personal privilege again, 'cause I just did talk to Superintendent Connie Hayes tonight, and she was inquiring if we had our member or not. For the actual board, it's, it's one from each district, and so it becomes a board in and of itself. Other people could certainly go and listen, but there would only be one voting member. And it is a fair commitment, and it's fascinating. Again, and I say fascinating in a different way, because, you know, with our special education population moving in the last ten years to, from eleven to sixteen percent, and a projected eighteen point five percent, that it's an important collaborative partner to really get to and have some consistency on the ground. So whoever does it should really commit for the long term. And those were Connie's, Connie's hope, rather, rather than splitting it six and six.
Yeah, and if, if I recall correctly, according to the predictions for our district, we're actually gonna have a higher percentage than that of special ed.
Eighteen point five by twenty sixteen.
Which is, yeah, I mean, that's, that's huge. So that's a, that's a really, really big deal. You gonna fight this out?
If you really wanna do it, I'll defer to you.
Thank you so much.
So Laura Palmer? Liaison to the City of Columbia Heights was Ted Landweir. Is there anyone that would like to do that?
I do it again.
I.
Think you get to.
There you go, here, you are again, Ted.
Hopefully we can have a joint meeting again. Be nice.
Uh, liaison to the City of Fridley.
I'd do Fridley if no one else, I'd live there, so.
Um, liaison to the City of Hilltop was Joe Sturdivant. Is there anyone that wants to do Hilltop? I'll do Hilltop. Next is the School Board Policy Committee. It was Laura Palmer, Keith Roberts, and Joe Sturdivant. It would be, it would be my recommendation, being there's two new board members, you're newly elected, you're just not new. That, sorry. That, that I would really recommend, because that's our main job that we do, that you take on something like that. It is, uh, they meet once a month, and it does go over policy, and you learn a lot from staff. So it would be, if you guys would be interested.
When do they meet?
Uh, it's right before the board meeting on Tuesdays.
On Tuesdays. Once a month.
Once a month, but it's five to? Six thirty.
Five to six thirty. Do you think you can do that, or, no, if you can't, it's okay?
No, but Tuesday, well, that's.
Wouldn't that be okay? Okay? And then I haven't sat on it for a while, so I, I could try, or Scott, I was gonna ask if you could, you wanted to do it this time?
Sure.
Alright.
We'll have a party.
You haven't sat on it for a long time, so that's why I was thinking maybe you. So we've got Scott, and John, and Laurie. Great. AMSD, Scott had sat on it, and I know you had talked about, to me about being interested in that position again, and I certainly understand that. Anyone else?
Scott did a wonderful job. Really, you did, you just did a fabulous job boiling it all down and.
I'd be interested in staying. I'm, again, I'm just a reporter, but.
You, you did a, you did a great job.
Well, thank you.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent. Everybody's okay, Scott, staying at AMSD.
Also, I just wanna say in the policy subcommittee, if someone doesn't want to serve, I'm happy to serve them. This time it's been a couple years.
Go ahead.
I really enjoyed the policy. I, I knew I wasn't gonna get back on it again, but I liked doing it, I did, I just.
I haven't done it since we started it, so. Columbia Heights Business Council was myself and Joe Sturdivant. Basically, it was really Ted, because I never went. I was always at work, so I, it, it conflicts with my schedule, so.
When do they meet?
They meet at seven thirty on the first Fridays of the month, seven thirty in the morning.
It's AMSD.
Yeah.
I'm happy to be there. I'm always there with my, I'm on.
You're there anyway, so.
I just wanna make sure that's not a conflict.
No.
Alright.
Wouldn't that be sort of like having two votes?
Actually, Bill and I sometimes can compliment each other for knowledge of the, what's going on here, so.
Because if we, if we have an appointment from the board as well as you, then, then we'd actually have two votes.
Do they vote?
No, there's no voting.
They don't vote. Always looking, always looking for an advantage there.
Informational only.
Okay, informational, sorry. I thought, I'm, I'm getting confused with the other one.
Alright, so we do need an alternate for that? Anyone?
Can do that, I actually started going just recently.
Alright, oh, so John is the alternate? Okay, cool. Now we're gonna go through the liaisons of the school.
Just, we're gonna take this and pass that, and then we'll do the liaison.
Oh. Sorry, I was, no, I thought we just.
Have I got that right?
Right, you're.
'Cause I don't see liaisons there. I see liaisons on the.
I'm looking for it. Motion to, yep, we've, we stop at the council, and I'm gonna need a motion to accept. Don, do you wanna read back everything that we've just discussed, please?
This is to approve the board representation appointments, as stated. MSBA Legislative Liaison is Missy Lee with alternative, alternative, whatever, Laura Palmer. ECSU would be Lori Meyer. Minnesota State High School League is John Larkin. TIES is Lori, Laura Palmer. WMAP is Missy Lee with Mr. Landweir taking over when time allows. Metro 916 is Laura Palmer. Liaison to the City of Columbia Heights is Ted Landweir. Liaison to the City of Fridley is Scott Bardell. Liaison to the City of Hilltop is Missy Lee. School Board Policy Subcommittee is Lori Meyer, John Larkin, and Scott Bardell. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts is Scott Bardell. Columbia Heights Business Council is Ted Landweir with John Larkin as the alternate.
Make, uh, entertain a motion on.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Scott, seconded by Laura. Discussion on the listing of represent, representatives. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. So, next we move on to the liaisons of the schools, okay? So, basically, these takes are, take over July 1. But right now, we have two that need to be taken over immediately. One would be Highland, one would be North Park. I was able to talk to Mr. Larkin earlier, and he said that he would be okay with taking Highland, and if you want to, 'cause he knows everybody up at North Park, so.
I was just gonna say, I'm at North Park all the time, so if you want, it makes no difference to me where I go.
I don't have one preference over the other either, so I'm fine doing North Park if you wanna.
So we're, for, until July 1, then we've got Lori Meyer at North Park and John Larkin at Highland.
And we need a motion, we have a motion.
And we do need a motion on the floor to accept those two positions.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Scott, seconded by Ted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. So, now, July 1, and I know that we've got the, the high school up, I've had a person interested in that, and that was Mr. Larkin. Highland's up, Valley View, Columbia Academy, North Park, and the Family Center, and I haven't heard anybody's interest other than that one. I am really okay with taking whatever anybody else is, you know, if they have real strong interests and stuff. But we can start out with the high school, and Mr. Larkin, you'd said that you were interested in it.
And I, I don't think I mentioned it.
Yeah, that it didn't matter.
I'm okay with, I'm gonna be, again, at the school on a regular basis.
Right.
For the rest of this year, as well as when my son comes up that way. So I mean, I, I don't have to be the liaison.
Right. And, and let me clarify to everyone on the board, especially, you guys, you can go to any building at any time for any event. It doesn't mean that you have to be just for that building, so be aware that you can do any, you'll be getting notices from all the schools on different events that happen, and you're more than welcome as board members to come there.
I, I would be interested in the high school, since my, my daughter's a student there. She'd be here last year, so.
I'm way okay with that, Ted, that's not a problem.
You don't mind?
No, not at all.
I think it'd just be a good fit.
Not at all, I'm gonna be up to X it anyway, it's, the title makes no difference to me.
We'll talk.
You're good.
Highland? Anyone interested in Highland?
That would be either Highland or Valley View, just because, either one, Highland or Valley View. I mean, if I'm gonna do Highland now, I'd, I guess I'd defer and go with Valley View unless somebody's got their heart set on that for next year.
I'm looking forward to just rotating around and getting, so I don't, doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so you, you wanna stay with Highland then, being that you're, you're there?
Do that North Park, right?
Actually, I'm in North Park, so it would be a switch to Highland, so that's fine.
Okay, alright, so we'll, we'll give Laurie that, and you want a Valley View?
I was gonna say, having been at all the schools, it really is nice to, to switch around, because each school has its own character, and.
Right.
It's great to get to know the district that way.
Okay. And then.
And also the schools really love to get to know each and every one of you, too, so.
They love to see us.
And now you had mentioned Valley View.
Unless, I know you were there last year, unless you have some ties to it that you wanna hang on to.
No, I, I've, I've been, uh, Valley View was the last school, I, it was the only school, actually, in this district that I hadn't had a child in. So, my children went to all the other schools, so I'm kind of, I'm, I'm serving this year, and I just guess I'm, I, it doesn't really matter to me, they're all wonderful institutions with great people, and, you know, I, I, I'll take, I'll take whatever.
I'd be inclined to go with Valley View then, I mean, that'd be a good school that I haven't been in a lot.
It's a great school, it really is. It's a great school. It really is.
I, the only thing, like I said, I'll take anything, so it doesn't really matter, but I, I was kind of interested in Columbia Academy, because I haven't been there for so long. So if anybody's, if everybody's okay with that. North Park.
I guess that's me.
Or Scott, either one, you know, but you want it, Lori?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. So Laura Palmer is in North Park, and Family Center will be Mr. Bardell. All right, so we've got our liaisons starting July one. For, you want to repeat them back?
To approve board representation appointments effective July first, uh, two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Columbia Heights High School, Ted Landweir. Highland Elementary, Lori Meyer. Valley View Elementary, John Larkin. Columbia Academy, Missy Lee. North Park Elementary, Laura Palmer. And the Family Center is Scott Bardell.
A motion on the floor?
Second.
And a motion by Ted, seconded by Scott. Is there any discussion regarding the liaisons of the school? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, then. Next on the agenda, appointment of bor, uh, board building le, oh wait, we did that, never mind. Appointment of board salaries and per diem for board members and board officers. This is where board members and officers will review the amounts of two thousand thirteen set by the board. It's going to be my recommendation that we just leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Not take anything. All right, I'm going to, if we're going to be leaving it the way it is, I'm going to entertain a motion on the floor.
I, I would just say that, looking at the other school districts, we are a little bit higher. I'd be willing to lower it to make it more in line with, we have ten other, or, yeah, about ten other districts in our board packet. I'd be willing to lower it, you know, three, three hundred dollars, just to make it more in line, given our, our financial situation as well.
Want a clarification? Are you talking throughout, you're talking in the salary throughout, right?
Right, for, for the directors, and then the chair would still get a hundred dollars more per month. Just a thought.
I'm just, I guess I think I'm, I would maintain that what we have, we've had this for years and years. It hasn't been an issue before, so, and it's, it's built into the budget, and, and there's a lot of work that goes behind a lot of this, whether, you know, the board, new board members don't realize it, but they do. I mean, and I, I respect your opinion, but I think, I guess I would say that we stay.
And I had that same view until I saw how we compared to other, other districts. So it just made me, um, feel that maybe we should lower it to be more in line with the other districts, if we don't have support for that.
Well, I, I would certainly feel comfortable with doing that, but the, the one other thing is, is I also did look at that, and we actually do more meetings than those other districts do. You know, so that is something that I guess each person would have to weigh, but I may not be okay with lowering it, too. That, that would be fine with me.
And I know, I can concur, but also the fact that we actually do a lot more as far as our representations, too, across the board on most, most districts. So you're going to a lot more meetings and spending a lot more time, and, you know, I-
That is absolutely true.
Um, is there a motion to accept the salaries or per diem as they stand right now?
So moved.
Motion by John, seconded by Lori. Any further discussion or discussion?
I just have a point of inquiry, and that would be that if we're voting on that, could we also then look at the suggested motion, either now or in, at a later time about the per diem and things? Because if you look at, we also have per diems for the per daily radiant excess of the four hours.
Right.
So the proposed motion on the sheet addresses both, whereas this motion doesn't.
Right, and that's, that's what is stated here, and the salaries per diem for board members and board office.
Okay.
So it is. Um, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
I want abstention. And that motion carries. Designation of depositories. Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations, please.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, Directors of the School Board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. As the resolution indicates in your board packet, these are the depositories we use now. I, we don't see any need to add any, but to continue with the same that we're using now. So my recommendation is to pass the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion from Ted, seconded from Lori, Laura, sorry. And discussion?
I just had one question when reading the resolution, where it says, "Be it further resolved." The dollar amount says two hundred and fifty thousand, but in parentheses, it's written out as one hundred thousand. Is that-
Oh, good point.
Um, just a typo?
You're right, that, that is a typo. We'll have to correct that. We need it at two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, and that's fine. I just, they were just not saying so.
Do you think it's necessary that we read the entire resolution if we make that correction?
Oh, well, do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution designating depositories. Be it resolved that the following be designated as depositories for certain monies of this school district, and as much as authorized and directed to honor and/or pay checks or orders when signed by the treasurer and the clerk, for the withdrawal of transfer of funds on deposit in said bank in whatever form. LaSalle National Bank, US Bank, Northeast Bank Columbia Heights Branch, Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund, Wells Fargo. Be it further resolved that the following investment brokers are hereby authorized and directed to honor orders when signed by the treasurer and the clerk for the withdrawal of transfer of funds on deposits and said instructions in whatever form. Citibank Group and PMA Financial Network. Be it further resolved that in case such deposits in the designated banks shall at any time exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, said depos, depository shall immediately furnish bond or securities in lieu of bond according to law, and the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis, Minnesota, or any of the aforementioned depositories are hereby designated as a place for the safekeeping of all securities furnished in lieu of such bond.
All right, I've got a motion and a second, and now if you could, who's the clerk?
I, I'm the clerk now. I've never done this before.
Get to call roll, please.
I get to call the roll. John?
In favor of this, right?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Missy? Aye. Palmer?
Aye.
And that, our resolution has passed. Designation of electronic transfer designees. Go ahead.
Yeah, as, as time goes on, we are now moving much more money by electronic transfer than by checks as we have in the past. We do make sure that we have two signatures on those electronic deposits, and I recommend that you would appoint myself and Gary Houn our accountant as the other designee.
All right, great. I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Laura. Discussion?
Does that mean that either one of you can-
That actually means both of us have to sign off in order to move any money.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Designation of legal counsel and contacts. Bill, you're up again.
These are the three attorneys that we use on a, on a regular basis, each for a different particular area of expertise, and we recommend that we would continue with this, with the same.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Lori. Further discussion?
I would just say that we've had these attorneys for a long time, and is there some wisdom in, in, you know, getting addition, new counsel at some point? It's been several years since we've done that.
Well, we have, we have a lot of experience with these, with these particular employee attorneys. They're very good at what they do. In order to change, we'd have to go through, I think, pretty lengthy process to find somebody as, as good as, as these three are. I, I guess I wouldn't want to just name somebody else. We'd have to go some, through, through some type of process to approve new ones.
In addition, we have, in two out of the three cases, cases that are continuing with these individuals, and they're very cost-effective, because two out of the three, one is tied through nine sixteen, the other through nine seventeen, which reduces our attorney's fees by probably eighty percent if you compare it to the norm. And then one is not, but it's, it's a specialty area where there is no collaboration. So it's a cost effectiveness by the hour as well.
Are these the only attorneys that are available through nine sixteen and two eighty-seven? Okay, so there aren't any other choices?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, designation of election clerk. Superintendent Kelly?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, you have before you a, a resolution to appoint a designee as election clerk, and we have had Dawn Hoyam trained by both MSBA and by Anoka County, and she goes every year for additional trainings, works collaboratively with the city and the county to organize our elections, and I would rec, I would recommend that since she's had five years of experience, that we continue with that.
So moved.
Got a motion from Scott, seconded by Ted. Any discussion regarding election clerk? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Designation of official newspaper. Bill?
We, we have attached the letter from Sun Focus. This is the paper we've used for many years now. They give us the best coverage for the, all of our parents and constituents. We did get, just to let you know, we did get a, another publication contacted us, asking for their business. I, I'm still going to rec, um, recommend the Sun Focus, this, this other one, which is the Anoka County Recorder, no Record, I'm sorry, Anoka County Record. The issue that I, why I would not want to use them is, number one, they're only electronic-based publication, so someone has to go online in order to read it. And the second is, it's only a bimonthly instead of weekly, like the Sun Focus is.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion from Scott, seconded by Ted. Discussion regarding the newspaper. I agree with you, Bill. I think that because it hits the, with our diversity and stuff, and electronic just wouldn't-
Wouldn't work.
Are these the only quotes that we received, then?
Uh, yes, what, then the main thing is to, is to, we have to have a paper that's going to cover all our, all of us. And the problem is that we have other papers, local papers, but they don't cover our whole area, and that's where we're running into trouble, where the Sun Focus will give us the best coverage to, you know, every household.
And, and I do understand that they, you can also pick this up on the web as well. I mean, you can-
That's, that's correct.
Get a printed copy, and you can also print it up, so, I mean, you can get the printed copy, or you can read it online, so we, we have the best of both. All right, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
So we have one last thing, and that would be, once again, we need to take the third vote on the election of the chair. So that being said, Clark?
Okay.
We need to call the roll.
Okay. Lori?
Landweir.
Scott?
Lee.
Ted?
Landweir.
Missy?
Lee.
John?
Lee.
Palmer? Landweir.
So we're down to a tie.
What?
Is the vice chair resolved?
Yeah.
We're going to do that next?
Yes.
It's okay, just want to make sure. All right, then we will be moving the election according to what we had voted on to the next meeting, and then we will have another vote at that point in time for the chair position. And I think that ends our meeting, tonight, our organizational meeting tonight. Once again, welcome to John Larkin and Lori Meyer. This was your first one, and there may be many more to come, but welcome, and we look forward to working with you, and it'll be a great team, and, uh-
I also want, if anybody wants to talk to me outside of the board meeting about the election and chair position, I'm happy to talk. Love to.
Anything else? Anybody got? So at eight oh two, I will adjourn this meeting.